Thank you all for coming, folks. We'll call the meeting order at 6:35.
Recording in progress.
Start by saying, uh, Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, before we get into public comments, we just have a couple of agenda adjustments. We will be moving recognition of Chad Spooner down to Mayor's Report. We'll be adding Mayor's Report in the ninth spot. And we will be adding to the third spot, uh, Sign Grant for Downtown Business. So that's...
So moved.
That will be proposed, so we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Trudy. All of them in favor of the changes and adjustments? Say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We'll start out with public comment. Public comment is for that, uh, those items that are not on the agenda. And if you have any comments, we'd like to have you keep them for two minutes. And we do ask that you be respectful, not only of the council, but of other residents and citizens within the city. So do we have anyone who would like to come up and state, have any public comments? Josh, just sit right down and you're the first one. No public comments? Oh, anyone online?
I don't know what I'm gonna do without you, Chip. I'll call in.
Uh, no comments online, then we'll move to item number three, which is Sign Grant for the business Little Little.
Number one in the packet, the total design. Council recall has been involved in assisting the renovations for the little. The last piece of that is a Sign Grant. We usually share 50/50 on those. This estimate is 6,600, so we'd ask for 3,300 in city funds out of the redevelopment fund as a grant for this project.
I make that motion?
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Chad. Any questions for Don on this?
Store opens tomorrow. Go visit.
Are we trying to convert other signs as well? I know there was always a talk of more uniformity in terms of the signs.
Yeah, I mean, we all, we, we have an active sign program, but it tends to be more opportunistic than evangelical.
No conversions really.
Any questions for Don? All good. All those in favor of the Sign Grant, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Don. Now we're gonna move to the overview of the city budget and TIF articles for Town Meeting Day.
Thanks, this is just a summary. There's been a lot of moving parts. We'll begin to ramp up our outreach and education program around the Town Meeting Day. But just to frame up a little bit what's on the morning for city voters, there's two articles, both of which are critical to the vitality of the city. The first is the city budget. And what's remarkable about the city budget is its minimum tax increase, particularly in the environment that we find ourselves in. City budget's up six tenths of one percent, so 0.6, which I think is, is not our lowest ever, but I think it's in second, second place. But it still offers a lot of investments that are pretty, pretty meaningful to the voters. It adds four new police officers, which allows the expansion into the town of St. Albans. It also adds two new detectives to increase our proactive investigations into drug crime. Has a new position focused on economic development, a new position to help manage the well and theater, and increase the public safety issues in the parking facilities. There's been a lot of commentary and reporting in various news outlets on school property taxes, and you'll hear about some of this in our next session. But too often that gets lumped into property taxes. And property taxes are two sources. There's the school side, and then there's the city side. And city side's barely moving. And there's no judgments from my part on the other side of the equation, but it's my job to champion this side and distinguish it, so that the municipal side's barely moving. What's, what's extremely important is the TIF article that's on the Town Meeting morning. We've used TIF extensively for the last 10 years. We've completed 21 million in public improvements, which has generated 70 million in new taxable values, new tax base, so up to three to one return. We've never raised anybody's taxes for our TIF programs. We won't tend to now either. So what's on the ballot is 11.4 million for tax increment financing. That's not a tax increase. It's all paid for from new development that's coming in. The 11.4 is divided into 10 million for the Bellevue Redevelopment Project. The city's role in Bellevue, as are other projects, is to acquire the land, remediate the brownfields, and construct the parking for mixed-use commercial and residential buildings on the land in back of City Hall. Bond also includes 1.2 million to construct new sidewalks on Federal Street and complete the design and permitting for the Federal Street Connector. We've received a large federal grant for that, just shy of 8 million, so we'll need to provide some of the match for the design portion of advancing that project. And it also has 200,000 in there to complete brownfield remediation on the old courthouse on King Street. We're at our last opportunity here to use the TIF program. The city's had a lot of previous successes on similar transformational projects. Voters will recall we began with Bay's Parkway in 2014. In 2015, we did the parking garage in Hampton Inn in the State Office Building, and that was the downtown core. We also then did Congress in Maine, the CCD building across the street, and the 60 units of housing associated with it. That was in 2017. In 2021, we completed the bulk of the former Fonda Container Redevelopment Project. The environmental cleanup for that project has been completed, and we recently cited the American Rail Dispatch Center relocating from Lake and Federal with 60-plus jobs. And we recently have secured some funding from VHFA to help us with increasing recruitment of developers for the remaining market rate units at the Fonda site. So in a nutshell, this is our last chance to use TIF. It is hands-down the most powerful economic development tool in the state. When you look around St. Albans, you can see what, what it's done for our city. And I'm asking the voters to allow us to use it one last time to complete projects that, quite simply, can't be completed without it. So that's what we got on the ballot. Welcome any questions.
Can you just review what type of housing for the Bellevue project and the courthouse? Are both of those workforce housing?
We're not the developer on courthouse one. Jim Cameron's the developer, but his vision is for workforce housing, and there, there's no subsidized housing employment sources in there. So, you know, it's Jim's job to speak to it, but I know that it's not, it's not reasons that the financial contributors that drive it to be less than market rate housing are not present in that. So it's workforce enough. On the Bellevue project, the Bellevue project is a mixed-use project, and so the bulk of it, we envision to be housing. And the target there is, housing is talked about in terms of area, area median income, you know, so what most people in the area are making. And this is targeted between 80% of AMI and 120% of AMI. So some units will probably be a little bit less than, you know, everybody in the area is making, some will probably be a little bit more. And, you know, well, when we get to the development agreement stage, that'll come back with the council in proposals from developers, and we'll, we'll have more information about that.
Don, when's Jim's expected, I mean, does fantastic work, work. When's his expected completion date? The outside's starting to look really nice.
Yeah.
With those and stuff.
You know, I mean, it...
I think within the month, isn't it?
Yeah, I mean, I don't wanna overpromise here, but I mean...
So by this summer?
Imminent is what comes to mind for me.
Okay.
The slowdown there was some electrical parts, right? And I'm told he has some traction with a tenant for the first floor as well.
Okay, awesome.
So I have a bat with Councilor Hawkins on the amount of parking that's available, so I'm excited to see that fill up.
So will the first floor be residential or not?
First floor is commercial.
Okay.
What was that total on the parking? 20?
Let's just let the regulatory documents speak for themselves.
The motorcycle parking?
Contact law.
Electric bikes.
Electric bikes.
Jim, Jim's got a permit for whatever it is, and Hawkins is, I think, is counting the level on the ground.
Not counting street parking.
Well, onsite parking. I might have to look at the minutes to see what's that.
Good luck.
Anyone on the council have any questions on the Town Meeting items?
I don't have another question, but I do wanna point out that when the finance committee met with you all, we were at about a 3% increase. We asked you to go back, sharpen your pencils a little bit more, and I want to just thank you for doing that and getting us to less than that 1%.
You're welcome.
My comment, I think you're being more than kind by saying a quarter of the rate of inflation. I think your rate of inflation is at least three and a half.
Yeah.
1.7 maybe.
1.7, yeah. I wanted to do simple math.
I know.
The first floor.
You didn't do it justice.
Aims low and overcheesed.
Anyone in the audience that would like to comment relative to the budget? Any questions? We're not gonna move forward until someone says something. Don, I'd just, and to the finance committee, thank you for the work. I think we, I think the whole council is proud of what we have presented and would, would hope that the voters support it come Town Meeting Day. Now we'll move to item number five, which is updated on school budget with Bill Kimball and Representative Mike McCarthy. We're missing our other representative, PC2, Sue. Did you wanna join us?
Do you want me to join Bill?
Yes.
I'm happy to.
I think that, I think comments might cross over. So Representative 2 had some childcare issues, and I don't think we'll be seeing him, so... So we invited Mike as representative and House leadership, right?
I'm the chair of the House Government Operations Military Affairs Committee now, so I'm not on the leadership team, but I'm in the broader leadership team of the House Committee Chairs that set the policy agenda.
So I think the council was concerned about the discussion regarding Act 127, potential increases, and I would say upfront, we know, we being the council, know that we're part of the problem, and that our CLA is at what level though?
67.
I believe it's 64.
Well, 67 this morning, dropping rapidly.
64 as in the report of January 1, so...
The moving targets are gonna be part of what I think is...
What's the problem?
Yeah. Somewhere in there.
So we knew, we knew our CLA was dropping two years ago, and then the COVID situation with escalated prices of homes, that did not help us at all, so we're here to say that we know we're part of the problem, but we, at the same time, I don't think the council truly understands on where we're headed and what that budget is, but we wanna make sure our residents know what to expect when they go into the voting. So I will turn it over to you, Bill, to begin with.
Great, I, Chip, I sent you a little presentation. Some of these slides we may stand for a little bit, and some we may not. And just to kinda give an overview of where the Maple Run budget is, and first I should say thank you to the council for letting me come and speak to you about where we're at. I appreciate the invitation, Tim. So if we go to the next slide, is a quick overview of our budget. Okay, and it's a little hard to see, I see that up there now, but we're up about 9.8% on overall expenditure, and we've seen some decrease in revenues from last year, even though we're up on local revenues.
Change the...
Yeah, go ahead.
Zoom in.
That, take your time.
I'm gonna try a different format here.
Well, he's doing that. School finance is probably, if not the most complex thing in the state, it's one of them. They're, one of the things that I hear, Mike, you and I have talked about this, is that there's probably about 150 people that, in the whole state, that really understand how the finance system works, and two of them are in every district, the business manager and the superintendent, and those who are joint fiscal and AOE. It's really complex. And this past year, with the passage of Act 127, it changed our formula for how that, how money gets distributed from the state to the schools. So one of the things that happened this year, and it says, is we changed to a weighted pupil system, where the weights that were there for equalized pupils were really just pulled out of thin air. There was no research behind it. So about four years ago, a study was done by the University of Vermont to see how much does it actually cost to educate students with different characteristics? So students that come from poverty, that are, English is a second language, that are high school students, that are middle school students, and that schools which are, have low density of population in the town, so very rural, and students that are in small schools. We neither have, in Maple Run, neither have small schools or low density of population. So that includes Fairfield. There's just, all three towns are above any of those limits.
What is the threshold for small school?
250 students.
And what's Fairfield?
Around 260.
Good.
Fairfield's about the 70th largest school in the state out of 300.
Really?
Yeah, so people think Fairfield's small. It really isn't. We're just used to the St. Albans-sized schools that we have. Our St. Albans, especially our pre-K8s, are some of the largest in the state. So that brings other costs involved as well. We get some, definitely get some benefits of efficiency for size, and that really helps as well, and especially in high school. So one of the things that, our education spending is up about 12%, right around the state average, and our equalized pupil, it says equalized there, it's now weighted pupil, sorry for the mislabel, but overall, there was a study in, and I'm sure, Mike, you'll be talking to this in a minute, about the new proposed bill, but we lost about 3% of our students if you equate what we used to have last year under the old funding system to what we have this year. So already down about 3% of our students. What that does is there's something that's called yield rate, which is how much money will we get per student from the state? I could get, I'm trying to be as least technical as possible. I could get a lot more technical about all of that. But that's come down a lot from last year, and that, how that fluctuates, actually has the biggest effect on the tax rate. And that's determined by what the overall spending is in the state. So for example, when Burlington puts a new bond in for a $160 million school, we're paying for that, as is all communities in the state, not just Burlington. When spending goes up in another school district, and we stay rate, we can actually increase our taxes, but not changing any spending here locally. So you're more driven by what happens in the state than what happens here in Maple Run. And that really happens through what that dollar yield rate is, is what, what's the rate of a dollar yield basically on the state grant list by what is the spending overall in the state in education? And I forget what we're up, do you remember what we're up this year so far in the last estimate, in education spending?
Education spending statewide?
Yeah.
It's around 18%.
It's around, yeah, it's up about 18%. So we could be flat here in Maple Run, and we would see increases in taxes. This is a statewide funding system. It's not a local funding system.
So can I just stop you for just a quick second? This actually might be a Mike question. So if all the school districts have that same approach and just say, hey, we can stay even, it's gonna go up, so we might as well go up. That's just gonna, how, how does that impact? Is that just meaning, so basically, I, let's, let's just add 60 million to the budget, and we're not gonna see, everyone, that'll be spread out everywhere.
So that's a little bit about what H850 is about, the bill I'm gonna talk about. I wanna, I wanna give Bill the opportunity to talk about what is our local context and what are we doing here first, and then I'll talk about how we're trying to address some of that. So, but I would say, setting aside the unique situation of having one-year cost pressures that are caused by a variety of factors. So every district across the state is facing some of these same pressures on their budget. 16% increase in...
17.
17%.
In healthcare.
In healthcare costs is like a really key driver, right? So the cost of staff is...
So I'm just gonna interject here, that's about 1.2 million dollars from Maple Run, just on healthcare alone was our increase this year.
So there are a number of other things happening. There, I would say, on the state side of spending, the federal spending that most of our constituents have heard about is really about, you know, one-time investments in infrastructure and things that are truly one-time money for one-time dollars. So when you hear us talking at the state level, or you're the governor, talk about how, you know, the federal money's kinda gone away, and there's gonna be, we were really careful not to spend on the state side money on things that were gonna be ongoing expenses that came from the CARES Act and ARBA funds, for the most part. The asset funding that went into schools, though, went in to pay for some things that are absolutely critical. A number, the entire Franklin County delegation, for the most part, was at BFA just the other day. And the things that we're hearing about the mental health costs and pressures that are on schools right now are one of the things that are driving cost increases across the state. So there are all of these sort of universal cost pressures. And then individual districts have a number of things that they're having to bond for finally, because there hasn't been state construction funding since 2007, and there is state construction funding in the sense that, just like Bill said, Burlington needs a new school, and they have a bond for $160 million. Because we have a statewide ed finance mechanism, that puts pressure on the statewide yield rate for everybody. So we're in a situation, to get back to where Bill is at, where the local decision is divorced from, or the local spending is divorced from what the tax rates are gonna be in large part, except for some functions that we've used to incentivize certain behavior and disincentivize other behavior with, in regard to school budgeting. And I think that's kind of a little bit of what Bill's gonna get into, and that's what H850 is really about, changing. It's, is fixing some broken incentives and disincentives that came out of our attempt to make it so that every school district had the ability to provide essentially an equal opportunity for the kids in their district. So Act, Act 127 had a, a mechanism of incentivizing disincentivizing behavior that was, that is now broken in an era where every district has an increase in spending, but the purpose of Act 127 was to make it so that districts that had been historically advantaged by that pupil wait formula that wasn't really based on any kind of evidence of what it costs to educate kids, that, that, that we could correct that and then create a glide path over time to, to help adjust. And that glide path and this 5% cap Bill is gonna talk about is, is what this bill is all about.
So I would say to you is, comparing this current fiscal year to next year's budgeted, we're actually down in spending per pupil. We're going down in spending per pupil, and that's with a 3% loss in pupils. So it's about, it's just about, as you can see, it's down 0.14%. And so we, with all, with all that, our education tax rate without the cap, and I'm gonna stay without the new bill for a minute, for a few minutes here, would have been $1.51, but that was over the 5% cap in Act 127, so that brought it into $1.43. Now, as I just said, our spending is basically flat or a little negative per pupil. The other limit in 127 is a 10%, you can't go over 10% in per pupil spending. We could have put another $5.7 million into the budget without hitting the taxpayers. The board knew this, and they knew that other districts are putting that money in. This is why the statewide ed fund's up so far. The Maple Run Board said that, our, our integrity won't let us do it. We're not gonna do that. We're gonna put in what we think we need to run the district. Now, we have sore, we have huge capital needs. BFA has some really big needs in it, that are, it, it's got some really hurting infrastructure. Could've used that 5.7, but elected not to do it. So if we go to the next slide, what you'll see with that 1.43 tax rate, and if you can zoom in on that, thanks, Chip, I appreciate it. With the, if we went with the top part there, you'll see the 64%, under St. Albans, you'll see the 64% CLA. So when we take that $1.43 with that 64% CLA, it brings us to $1.35. This is without, sorry, with the, the $1.51 without the cap would've got us to 2.35 and it's 2.36, a 23% increase. If you scroll down, Chip, with the cap tax rate at 64% CLA, it's $1.23 with a 17% increase. So that's what the tax rate is with, with the cap piece. If you can go to the next slide.
We just, so that's saying if you have a $200,000 house...
Yeah.
Your taxes are gonna go up about $600 this year?
Yes.
On top of the $600 that went up last year?
Yes.
So my, so I just did some quick research. FY '23 was 64 mil, FY '24 was 69 mil, FY '25 is 76 mil. Do you ever take a couple hundred thousand? So my tax rate that was, was a few years ago, 4,500, is now closing in on $6,000, $6,000 in two years.
Yep.
On my tax rate, on top of all the other inflation that I'm also paying, and an employer who won't give you a raise because everything else is going up as well. So this is, I think this is one of the things we're saying, wow, we, we need to do something. Like, I don't know, it's a little of both. But it's, it's, it's hard, it's hard. Like, I, I look at, what am I getting, so these folks here, we get hammered, hammered because of the tax rate, because people call us up and say, the taxes went up $700. It went up $11 because of the city. All that other money is the school tax. Look at it, so my $5,200, 1,500 of it's for the city, so that's your fire, your police, keeping your roads clean, all that. The rest of it's school. So we're getting hammered on that, because they get it from the city, and we are the representative to the city.
And I speak for the, for the retired folks that are trying to stay in their homes and live accordingly. We get one paycheck a month, doesn't get a big raise every year. It gets to the point that then you have to decide, can we afford to live here anymore? So, yeah, I...
I'm happy, Mike, that you're, I haven't read this, Tim put it in front of me, I'm not gonna be there before you present, but I'm glad you're working on it at least, 'cause it's, it's...
And I want, I wanna, I'm gonna say, I hear you 110%. I'm, you know, the, the, the big piece of where we're, we're trying to find what can we get to be more efficient, but I also have to balance of how the tax system works. And it sounds like a lot of bureaucratic mess. It wasn't what, I mean, I think, you know, I think all the way back to Act 67... It wasn't what, I mean, I think, you know, I think all the way back to Act sixty, that's when the common level of appraisal came into effect. And I have a next slide to show you some of that and graphic wise, I agree exactly everything you said about what's happened to the tax rate. But eighty percent of that's due to CLA.
Can I ask a question before you? Um, last year when we had the first big increase that we really all felt?
Yeah.
Was, what was the percentage increase last year, and this is pre Act one twenty-seven?
So, right, but, yes.
So what was, so last year when we had the first big hit?
I'd have to go back and get that for you, Trudy, I didn't bring that with me.
I, I recall like you put a bunch of positions that were, positions that were from COVID money, put them all in the budget, and it took a big, it took a big increase.
It took a big increase, it took, it was about a million dollars, I don't have the percentage off the top of my head, I can get you that. But I can show, I can show you some of this right on, if you let me get to the next slides, I can show you some of this. But I did bring some of that data with me.
Okay, thanks.
Can I just summarize quickly before you do that, Bill? So this isn't sustainable, right? It's not sustainable for anyone here.
Yeah.
I'd like to think it's not sustainable for the school budget. And the question probably goes more to you, Mike. How, how are we gonna get out of this? I mean, we can't, we can't afford seven, eight hundred.
I wanna say I totally agree with you, I haven't talked about any of the things that we're doing about it yet, I've been holding off until Bill's done. So I will absolutely address those concerns. There's essentially a three, three stages. H eight fifty is the first thing that we're gonna do. I completely agree with you that double-digit increases annually are not sustainable. I also wanna take one quick step back and say that I was on the city council, I support everything that we did with TIF, I'm gonna vote yes on what we're doing with TIF, I have defended TIF. It is an absolutely incredible tool. It also has allowed us to increase the grant list, which essentially here locally increases the pie so that we can buy more services without an impact on the tax rate, right? When you have that big increase in the value, you are able to do more. And also, we have had the ability as the city to do incredible things in terms of the deal that's been made, uh, with the town around policing, the ability for us to, you know, do things like dispatch where we get economies of scale, like, under this council and Dominic's leadership, the things that you all do here have a really direct impact and you have control over everything that happens. And what Bill and I are, are here to say is that our statewide fu- funding mechanism is really fundamentally flawed and we realize that it needs to be fundamentally changed. But I think we can't do that at the state level without a lot more of the state saying, hey, this is, this is gonna be our vision for education. And right now, there is not a statewide vision for education in the state of Vermont. You know, if, if we came down as the legislature and, you know, if the governor was willing to participate in this conversation and actually have an agency of education that was willing to, you know, go help schools figure out how to do things better, that is not what we have right now. But if the legislature came down and said, you know, we're gonna say every single flat size has to be the same across all districts. Or we were gonna say, listen, I'm really sorry, I know that, you know, that school that has ninety kids in it or forty kids, in the case of a couple of schools, um, is really important to your community as a center, but the building can still be there, but we're not gonna put ed dollars into that building anymore. Um, those are the kinds of conversations that while Act forty-six was really painful for a lot of communities in terms of how to consolidate governance, it did not address the real drivers of cost. And it did not address the fact that in order to do what we have to do constitutionally and have had to do for the past generation in school financing, and that was how Act sixty was born, was an interpretation of our state constitution that, that I think was right in saying that we can't have rich towns have great schools and poor towns not be able to afford teachers and books for their kids. And so we equalized that. But now we have a funding formula that has so divorced local decision-making from what the tax rate is that I hear that, that our neighbors are frustrated. We know that. But our neighbors also really care about schools. And the things that they're expecting out of schools aren't cheap. Aren't, all of us, I think, expect a degree of staffing and a quality of programming and a type of building and a space and the athletic facilities and the things that are really the heart of our community in so many ways. And our school system is doing a really fantastic job here and not having nearly the kinds of increases that other school systems are having across the state. I think we have an opportunity here to really lead in, in many ways. Um, and I think that Bill and the Maple Run Board are gonna try to get there and I'm looking to them to lead us as your local representative to the State House on how to do that. But I wanna let Bill kinda finish about what is, and then I'm gonna talk about the three steps of how we're gonna get out of this mess.
I, I just wanna share one last comment, I mean, we made reference to the health insurance going up seventy percent. That's not a one-off, I mean, that's double-digit increases. I know the state tried to do a statewide healthcare.
They did, they did do it.
Teachers' health is statewide.
It is statewide.
It's negotiated statewide.
When will it be negotiated again would be my question.
It's every two to three years, and so far, the way the system is set, it's a, there is, the way the legislation was written is that each side comes with their best offer and the mediator choose, if they go to mediation, can't put pieces from each one, they have to choose one or the other. And every time it's taken the Vermont NEA's proposal.
And, and a good number, I can just, cuz I am a teacher.
You are?
Yeah.
I didn't know that.
Often the raises that people are getting each year are eaten up by the healthcare costs. So people aren't necessarily making any more money, which also impacts the ability to pay taxes, right?
Hi, Bill. So just Trudy, Trudy, your information with, Bill, just tell me if this sounds right, about eight, eight point zero six percent last year, a two hundred thousand dollar house in St. Albans, that'd be up five hundred forty-four dollars.
One thing before we go on and while we're on this slide about CLA that I, I hope that people understand, you know, Bill talked about how a significant percentage of the rate increase is about the CLA. I could probably sell my house, and I bet most of you counselors could too, for double what it's assessed. And so that's what that sixty-four percent means, not quite double, maybe.
But that, that is, I mean, it's a, it's a, it's an unrealized excise tax every year on homeowners. I feel it too, I mean, I see it in my community, my community is around, is below seventy percent. And it, it's, it's hurting the whole state in a way because there are so many, I talk with my colleagues, superintendents, we're not the only ones down in these percentages. Stowe's at fifty-five percent, they're looking at a twenty-three percent increase right now.
So when we get to a hundred percent on the CLA after a reappraisal, what can we expect from that?
Well, so let's go to a couple of slides, cuz I can show you that. I mean, I, I, I think I can help with a lot of questions, so let's just go past this right now. All right, let's get to this one a little bit, if we can see that graph. So this is what you'll see on here. So the, the, um, so the green line at the bottom is what's called the education tax rate. This is what the board has control over, and this is since the beginning of Maple Run. So we've varied anywhere from a dollar thirty-six to a dollar forty-nine on the education tax rate. And this year's budgeted is a dollar forty-three, that's, this is pre-CLA. If I adjust that for inflation, that's the green, the dark green line's above it. So if I adjust all those costs into two thousand twenty-three dollars, the tax rate back in two thousand seventeen would be equivalent to a dollar seventy-nine today. So adjusted for inflation, our tax rates have come down. And if I look at the, look at where the breakpoints are in the CLA, the CLA is a three-year rolling average of ha- of property transfers. We still have one more year of steep decline to go. We've gone through two, we've got another year to go. So, I mean, I hear the council when you say, hey, this is, this is not sustainable, I agree with you on that. I agree with you on where CLA is on that. But the board has kept that, is always targeted, like, let's keep the school part that we control, the only part of that whole equation as level as possible. And they've given me that directive when we prepare budgets. So they've done that. So if you can go to the next slide, uh, Chip, I think we're probably gonna skip it. Right there, it's just, you don't need to zoom in on it, but you can see that red line, that's the real tax rate, the actual tax rate that people see. So you can see that steep climb as CLA is going down. The next slide I actually think says it better. And this, so this is a slide of the actual tax rate, and what's in the blue is the part the board controls. So that's the educational tax rate. The orange is the effect from CLA.
So we would be at the blue if we were CLA.
Hundred percent, that's where Tim was asking the question. I was like, that's where you'd be. Bill, you'd be there as a, as a measure of the rate, the money is not gonna change.
I agree with you, I agree with you.
A CLA is a mini reappraisal. And we can't change the fact that St. Albans is a much nicer place now. Therefore, the education department and the tax department is grabbing our values and redistributing those around the rest of the state.
Yeah.
That's what, that's what's going on, and so.
But we've invested a lot of money to get there.
Agreed, agreed, and, and we should be proud of it and, and, you know, and, I mean, the, the CLA is in many ways a measure of vitality, right?
The state has also helped us invest a lot of money here. So that's when we talk about, when we talk about what the TIF has allowed us to do, that's also where it's, there's a give and a take here as well. And, and this is a part of the consequence of having this statewide mechanism and being able to leverage it.
But long-term, the state is gonna benefit significantly.
Yes, and we all benefit significantly from having a much nicer community to live in, so nobody's gonna argue with that.
I mean, I've heard those several times. The reason I'm working in St. Albans, or the reason I chose to apply to work in St. Albans and love to work in St. Albans is because of the vitality of St. Albans. I worked in a small rural district that was losing population left and right. Cut lots of positions over the seven years that I was superintendent there because it's not stable or sustainable. And they probably have CLA approaching a hundred. No, they don't, they have it dropping because what's happening is people are moving in and buying that have no kids and buying it at a much higher rate, and they wanna live in the country. But they're not bringing kids into the school system either.
They have a double whammy.
Double whammy.
Chip, you have a color?
I was just gonna say, I'm not so sure TIP's part of the problem here, but twenty-five percent of all new tax revenue still goes to the state, we keep seventy-five. You, if you, if you entertain a hypothetical where we never did the TIF, we never attracted all the development, our grant list might not have even grown that twenty-five percent. So our TIF district is actually probably sending more money to the state just with that twenty-five percent right now than if we hadn't done the TIF in the first place.
So this seat, so can I just go back?
We'd be like the little towns that Bill described.
Yeah.
We'd be affordable housing for Chittney County.
Right, yes.
So can I go back to the CLA for a second? So one of the big questions that residents ask me when we do a reassessment, they're like, oh my, so my, my hundred fifty thousand dollar house is now worth three hundred thousand, just for an easy money. Um, and they're like, oh my God, my taxes are gonna double, and they're not gonna double because we're still collecting the same amount. So your tax rate is gonna go down, so instead of getting a dollar for every hundred thousand, now we only need fifty cents.
Well, and Bill showed you in, in the previous slide that before the CLA is applied, the tax rate's about a dollar forty-three, and I think if the city tax rate was up above two twenty, with the CLA applied, that's the difference, the rate.
But that's what I'm saying, is if my hundred fifty thousand dollar house is now worth three hundred thousand, I'm getting taxed on the three hundred thousand, so that, how much is that, how much of that is not, is non-existent anymore?
So, so what's tricky about the CLA is that if we fixed that problem and we're at a hundred percent, right? So like, I talked about how, you know, my house is half, you gave the example of one fifty versus the three hundred. The amount of money that we raise off a similarly situated property is still gonna be the same. The rate will go down, the assessed value goes up, right? It's exactly what you were describing. But the trick about it is that right now, it's a really blunt instrument. It's not taking into account the real changes and what's going on in a community and the neighborhoods, and it's not like anybody's gone out there and really looked at, you know, what are the value of these houses and what's fair to assess? The CLA is just a formulaic reappraisal that's based on the property transfers. It's based on the, the rolling average of the properties that are moving. And, you know, all of us have heard the stories of people that are buying houses, setting up unseen here for cash.
More than they're asking for.
Yeah. Yeah.
It's happening all over Vermont.
Yeah.
It's happening here just as much as it is in my hometown in central Vermont.
The CLA applies the multiplier to everybody?
Yeah.
Yeah, after the reappraisal. They say your neighbor's property goes up a lot more than yours. Right now, the CLA is treating everyone like it's your neighbor's property. After the reappraisal, everyone will be taxed based on what the market value of their home is, and some will be more than others based on what the market value of their home is. But right now, the CLA is treating everyone like your home is, is worth, um, um, like, it's only being valued at sixty-four percent of what it's really valued.
Um, the, the budget went up about, is it, close to nine million this year from last?
Yeah.
Just the number, not, not talking about all the confusing funding formulas, but the actual number. She said one point two million was.
Sixty-nine to seventy-six point two, so seven point two.
It's up six point eight mil.
Okay, you said one point two million was healthcare.
One point two is healthcare.
What are all the other millions? And I know salary is a huge one, but I, I know that like teachers in our district don't make what teachers in Chittney County make, so I'm just trying to.
Well, I actually would like to change that, Trudy, we're around fifth or sixth on the state salary base, base level. We're actually doing pretty well, our, our settlement.
Even in Chittney County, did you?
All over Vermont.
Interesting.
All over Vermont, we had that in negotiations and I can let that out publicly.
My supervisory unions.
But, but, well, they have to negotiate by school districts, which, or supervisory unions, depending which configuration you're in.
So is the rest of that seven million is at all salary?
So seventy-five percent of our, seventy-five percent of our cost is salary. We put a three percent inflator on everything else after personnel costs.
And this is no new staff?
No new staff.
Be- because you added a lot of new staff last year, not new, but.
We did add staff, right, we brought some in from last year. But we have one, there's actually, I shouldn't say that, overall, when I think of all the staffing, there's one position.
Yeah.
And that's including some that are open and some that aren't, sorry, I was trying to flip to this so I can answer your question. Uh, seventy-six percent of the budget is staffing. Five percent is contracted services, so services outside. Twelve percent is tuition, transportation, property services. Five percent is supplies and two percent are dues, fees and debt.
So do you have a surplus from last year? Because you have a lot of vacant positions.
We had, we had, we had money that went into the capital fund, and that's the only way we do capital improvements on the buildings.
And how much went into the capital fund?
I'd have to go back to look at the, at the audit report, I know it was around two million, but I can't quote you exactly.
Well, if we need capital funds, can't we just put it in the budget and have all the other towns help us pay for it?
That's what, that's what others did, Trudy, that's what, and that's where they use when we had, when we had. Right, but we needed, you know, we need, we're gonna be using those funds. We use those funds every year to try to keep the buildings as up to date and, and meeting code as we can. We have some code issues at all of our buildings.
I think the biggest challenge, and because I am in a school and have been for many years, the, the challenge is that schools are expected to be everything to all kids all day. When I started teaching thirty-one years ago, we weren't feeding kids breakfast, lunch, snack. We weren't providing mental health services in school. We didn't have social workers and diversity people and social emotional learning coordinators. I think, while all that's important, at some point, how can we continue on that trajectory of doing everything for all kids? And having the taxpayer pay for it. And even the universal meals, I know you're gonna be surprised to hear me say this, that while it is nice, I could, if my kids are in school now, I could pay for their lunch. I could a hundred percent pay for lunch. Kids come to school and they eat their breakfast at home and then they eat lunch at school, and they eat breakfast at school. They bring their lunch from home and they eat bre- and lunch from school. Um, we, we, it's a nice thing to do, but that was a huge, that was a huge, um.
It's around twenty-nine mil, I believe, to the ed fund.
Twenty-nine point three.
Right, so what I'm, like, while it feels good to do that, and I'm a teacher, and I'm saying that if maybe you just raise the, raise the bar of who gets, who's eligible for free or reduced lunch, like, increase that, but if someone can afford their kid's lunch, let them pay.
Yeah, talk to lunch lady.
Tim doesn't like that, he wants free lunch.
No, I'm all for it.
So the last thing is, the last thing they'll say to Trin's.
You agree with me?
I totally agree with you. What's gonna come out of that as well? You've got the diversity and the equity and all that stuff.
There's, there's ways around that.
That's always gonna be the conversation, that, um, my kids, my kids.
The twenty-nine million, we need that in the ed fund.
My kids have yet to take a school meal.
Well, because it's not that.
They're right, they don't like it, but.
So.
Let me, let me just, quick question.
I was gonna transition us back to the new bill if you want, if you got it. I'll answer your question, yeah.
Just for both of you. How many, how many districts are there, Chris?
So there's fifty-eight districts, fifty-three.
So what happens if forty of them turn down the budget?
We go back and work on it.
Yeah, we're gonna make sure that's what happened. We should talk about how and, and why and how that's gonna work.
So let me, I'll just give you that transition right now. And I won't, you don't need to do any more slides, Chip, you could take them down. But I can show you the calculation up there. But we, the proposed legislation that's under House, uh, eight fifty, I believe that's the number of the new one. Um, we ran the calculations late last week when they came out. There's a new yield function and we'll be discounted three cents. Literally, the tax rate for St. Albans, for Maple Run will not change. It's uncanny. It's literally a tenth of a cent difference.
So, so that's a lot of all things being equal. So a lot of, so I wanna start from a place of that education yield rate, the local yield rate that Bill referenced a number of times, is based on a whole bunch of statewide assumptions. It has to be because we have a statewide ed finance mechanism. Many of the assumptions that went into the letter we got on December first, that went into the twenty-twenty-two Act one twenty-seven. Um, we now know couldn't have captured all of the various cost pressures that I talked about. And one aspect of Act one twenty-seven was that the, the mechanism that we were going to allow schools that had been historically advantaged to essentially, if they had, if they lost a lot of tax capacity, that we would have kind of a circuit breaker at five percent and they'd be able to spend up above that amount. That works when, you know, the last few years, we had like, you know, three percent increases on average or four percent increases. It does not work in an environment where every single school district across the state has above five percent. It goes over it. Um, it was just a fundamentally broken formula, given the state of affairs that we now know, you know, what we learned last fall was going on in schools. So I've worked with, um, Peter Collins, the House Education Committee Chair. Representative Kornheiser is the Ways and Means, the Tax Committee Chair, um, and others to draft this bill, eight fifty. So I'm on the Government Operations Military Affairs Committee. We did all the election parts. Um, and what the Ways and Means Committee was really trying to do was to say, okay, we know that a number of districts across the state did not do what Maple Run did. They said, if the formula's gonna allow us to spend a few million dollars more, we're gonna take everything we can get. A few of those districts very publicly wrote to their taxpayers about how they were doing that. And I think that that made a lot of people across the state and other places very angry because the, there's only one sort of pie of the statewide grant list, right? And so any spending that one district does has an impact on that yield rate. The fundamental thing that's going into the beginning of that formula. So the first thing that, the first step in sort of correcting all of this with eight fifty is to say, that smoothing mechanism is broken, we're not gonna do it. And if you are school districts who took advantage of that and you're now gonna, since we're gonna take away that funding smoothing formula and do a much more targeted, discreet one to a few districts that were particularly disadvantaged, um, in a much less complicated way, that, that's gonna make a lot of those districts that went after some extra money, see, their tax rates really go through the roof. So there's a disincentive for them to continue down this path. But a lot of them have already worn into their budgets. A lot of the ballots are already being printed right now. So what H eight fifty does is gets rid of the formula that's broken, establishes a new one for districts who are particularly disadvantaged by Act one twenty-seven to kind of get over the hump. And then it says, if you're one of these districts that's now, or this new formula, gonna have a disincentive to do that extra spending, you can have a one-time re-warning of your budget. And the state will actually pay the administrative costs of you if you have to, um, hold a second election uh, on or before April fifteenth, uh, in order to have that budget article vote on a modified or re-warranted lower budget number. Then we're gonna give you a little bit of money in the thousands of dollars to do that. Um, and there are a number of districts who are already signaling strongly that they're gonna take advantage of that. So if we think about the entire cross, cost pressure, you know, we've got about a two billion dollar ed funds. The cost pressures this year are a little above two hundred million dollars. And we already put aside some money in reserves to buy down. I think about twenty-three million of that was already kind of baked in. So call it a two hundred million dollar problem this year. We're guessing that this is gonna solve somewhere between fifty and seventy million dollars of that. Um, so it won't do the whole thing, but it may get the sort of eighteen percent down to more like a thirteen or a twelve percent. Um, if we're successful in getting this out, getting it passed quickly and allowing some of those districts to go back to the drawing board. I already know that like one of the districts that was the most vocal only needs here, um, but their school board chair called me and asked me about the valley mechanism. So they're already planning on this bill passing and knocking a few million dollars off of their budget. And that's just one district. So the first thing is to have them go back and say, all right, we're gonna go back to the drawing board. We're not gonna spend that extra money that we could have under Act one twenty-seven. We can re-warrant our budget. Give them some more time and a little bit of money to actually do the re-vote. So that's sort of step one. The next couple of things that we're gonna need to do are gonna be harder. And I think that Vermonters really value their schools. I think everybody in this room values our schools. But the way schools look in communities that are growing like ours are really different than what schools look like in some other parts of the state. And there're gonna have to be some more difficult conversations about the buildings, the staffing and the investments that we're making so that every kid has opportunities. It's not actually great for kids to be in schools where the class sizes are so small and the resources are so low that they don't have access to the kind of programs that we have in bigger schools here. That we, you know, have the economy of scale and the number of students and the size of buildings that we can actually serve kids well. And, um, and that's gonna be really, really difficult politically for a lot of people.
Can I just give an example of that? I personally have an example of that. My daughter attends People's Academy. It's the twin to BFA. It's designed by the same architect, one-year difference construction. She's in the class of forty-five that are graduating seniors. She had to go to two CCB classes this year for what I know she can get up here. Because she doesn't have the offering. So we wanna talk about equity and what kids have access to. Our kids in St. Albans have great access because of the size of schools at. We get fifteen to kids that wanna do a course and a teacher that wants to do it with them? And we can fit it in the schedule? What, and that happens at BFA. That doesn't happen a lot of other schools. And so I think about the small schools and what that equity piece, and that's a huge cost driver to a whole Vermont education system. And until we have, and Mike's heard this from me, until we have these hard conversations about size and staffing, we all love Vermont and we love the ruralness and the smallness of Vermont. Being in Vermont, I myself am born and lived in this state my whole life. It's like, I love that part of it, but at the same time, we're paying for that part of it. And that's across the whole state, that's the ed system.
And is there a way that if, if a town wants to keep their school where there's a teacher teaching six children, that they can do that, they just can't take from the ed fund? Like, I mean, if someone really is.
No, not now, no.
Because there are some teachers that are making a full teacher salary and they're teaching five or six kids all day.
No, they, that goes through the ed fund.
Even if, so if they wanted to keep their school, they still would have to take from, I mean, and that's, that's expensive.
So this is kind of the challenge here, is that we, we have not had the ability, and this goes back to, to Act sixty itself. We have not had the ability in this state to really look in the mirror and say, do the things that we think are good for our communities and the things we think are good for our kids, are they really based on the things we know that are good for our kids and the things that our students need in a twenty-first century workforce kind of a way? Or are they the things that make us feel good because it's the picture of a little school with little class sizes? And, you know, there's a very small school, um, from the southern part of the state that brought all of the students, the entire school, to the state house. And they all fit up in the senate seats and like did a little concert for us. That sounds great, but the way that that school functions and the preparedness of those students to go into the bigger school system isn't there. And I think that this moment, the silver lining is that, you know, there's that saying, never waste a crisis. I am hearing for the first time in the state house, people openly talking about not only changing those sort of programmatic and what our school looks like policy questions and being willing to have more of those conversations happen at the state level instead of revolving all of that to the, the local level about can we keep that little tiny school open? Because right now, that's a local decision. The funding of it isn't local to Dominic's point earlier. But the, the decision to have that little school open is definitely local. The other piece of it is this funding formula. And there's no state that's had a funding formula survive as long as this funding formula has survived. And there's a reason for that. It, it, it has become, in an effort to be fair, it's become too hard for voters to understand. And in times when there are unusual cost pressures on such a big system with so many different people making disparate decisions, you get an issue where it's the tragedy of the commons, right? It's, it's, districts say, I'm gonna do what's good for me, and it's not good for the state as a whole. The one last thing I'll say to, uh, to Marie's point is that another complexity of our property tax system is that we income sensitize it to a great degree. And a lot of that is to address exactly the point that you brought up about people who are on a fixed income. If you've retired, you know, you, you might have social security, maybe a small pension or, or savings. But if you're seeing these big, you know, a few hundred dollars a year, each year in tax increases a couple of years in a row, that can really hurt a lot. And what we've done in order to make that less difficult is that we've made it so that basically anybody who makes less than a hundred and thirty thousand dollars a year in their household on sliding scale has, um, some level of subsidization from the state. So, um, not everybody sort of feels this pain equally. Um, and there are a number of things that, that we're contemplating now besides just Act or H eight fifty, um, to address the one twenty-seven formula that I think are worth mentioning. So, um, in the end, what always happens every single year is we get a really scary December first tax letter that shocks the heck out of everybody. And then the legislature's been able to, in more modest years, especially with, um, the non-property tax revenues that go into the ed funds, like the consumption taxes, you know, sales tax. That, that, those taxes that go into the ed fund haven't been growing at a good clip as Vermont's economy is doing really well. They didn't grow at the same rate. They still grew, but they didn't grow at the same rate now that things are leveling off a little bit after all the COVID stimulus. And so the property tax is, is having more of the increase. But we've been buying down these increases in the ed fund for years. We've been buying down for years. So the property taxes have been artificially pushed down by the legislature for a while. And what you've seen over the last couple of years is we haven't been able to maintain that anymore.
So that, that, that should send you a message, right?
Should it send us, I mean, but the question is, what is the message? So is the message that we should cut funding to schools?
No, the message is that we, we, the, the system in place now, if you're buying down those rates or paying down, we can't afford it, right? Without the input from the state. So each, each community can't afford what's the, what the budget is without the involvement of the state.
Yeah. And so the, so the, if you wanna get the increases in school budgets under control and actually help solve some of the issues that we've been talking about with there being sort of extra things on schools and, you know, I voted for school meals. And all the data at the time said that that was a good choice, and I still think it was a good choice. Um, but maybe there are ways we need to modify that. And I think that all, everything is gonna be on the table now in a way it's never been politically possible to do. And that's the much longer term conversation we're at.
I would add in that, the PCB in construction. We've got.
We haven't even gotten to that.
We, three of our schools have.
Oh, are on the.
Yeah, yeah. And we found PCBs in all three schools.
Yeah, but that's not in the budget?
No.
Yeah.
And that, that, you know, we're, right now, we're getting the testing taken care of by the state, but I don't, I'm not sure we're gonna get the remediation.
I wonder, uh, one, one thing, I mean, just going back to your point to, to Marie, Mike, is that, uh, even though it may be sensitized, a five hundred dollar or three hundred dollar increase to one family is, could be similar to eight hundred dollars to another family, depending on what their income is. So even though it's sensitized, the, the, the property owner can still be substantially impacted by it. Whether it's sensitized or not, I mean, if you're, three hundred dollars to me, maybe, well, all these chats, my three hundred is nothing to chat. Or a thousand, you know, a thousand, that's, that's people to chat, a thousand, if you will. I wanna go to, uh, is there any questions in the audience? Any comments, any questions?
And can I just talk for a second?
You certainly may. And your name is?
Meg Jarvis. Um, I, I have a couple points, actually. The first thing I wanna ask Mike about is the lottery money. That's been shifted into the general fund for quite a while. And I'm, I'm wondering, out of, it was supposed to go to the ed fund and it's been shifted to general. Um, can you tell me what that money was used for? That's one thing. Um, the other thing is, uh, getting Trudy.
Do you want, do you want Mike to answer you?
Right, that's my first question.
I think the only part of the lottery that goes to the general fund is just the part that pays for the lottery administration. I mean, all of the proceeds of the lottery go to the ed fund still.
Yeah.
I'm seeing a nod from, uh, Mr. Manahan in the back who's on the board.
Mighty, what's that amount?
So fifty million dollars?
Yeah, just on there last year.
Yeah, so it's about fifty million dollars out of a two billion dollar budget, but we'll take every, we'll take every bit we can.
The second question I have is, um, kind of going back to Trudy's point a little bit about how schools have become everything for everybody. Um, I'm wondering if there's any conversation, um, at the state house and, um, with Agency of Human Services about, um, putting some money into schools for what I would say is a pretty big mental health crisis right now, um, in the country. And it's starting with kids younger and younger. And we're being asked to start to address that kind of stuff. And I'm just wondering, is there a conversation about when we wanna be everything for everybody, but we're, you know, our funds are limited and we're looking at, you know, having to possibly make cuts if the budget doesn't go through. When do we start having a broader conversation about if we wanna be the hubs for our communities? Where does that funding come from and how can we sustain this?
I can give a little bit from the superintendent's perspective. Um, so Meg, from the super, I know that, uh, one of my colleagues, um, Lynn Cota, who's the superintendent up in Franklin Northeast, is, one of the things we've been meeting regularly with NCSS, the Franklin County and Grand Isle superintendents. When we say that big piece that Meg just said about the mental health, it's too big to grab our hands on. One of our biggest problems is we have, schools can never say no to any kid. We're the only entity that has to take all. And that includes mental health. So when a student comes back from residential and their residential placement isn't there, we have to provide the services. We don't have a choice. So one thing, there are only beds in Chittenden County and in Brattleboro. And they're full and the waiting lists are long. And there's only, I think, seven beds in Chittenden County, the rest are in Brattleboro.
It's a year and a half waiting list.
Yeah, yeah, you know, thanks, Trudy. I, I didn't remember exactly what it was, but it's a long waiting list. Those students' needs are extremely expensive, over north of three to four hundred thousand dollars. And so that we've actually made a very pointed ass from the superintendent's association to say, help us with kids that need these real severe needs, have real severe needs and have really complicated services. And what's happened is a lot of the residential houses, in-state and out-of-state are shut down. So we, everyone in Vermont, we're sending kids out of state now. So we, everyone in Vermont, we're sending kids out of state now for these services. And as Trudy said, it is, it's a long, long wait. And so that's our real specific ask that we've that I know my colleagues have testified to help you with Meg's question. The broader piece is one that's just so hard because of the overall cost of all the mental health uh issues that we're seeing in use today. And it's it's exponential.
Some some of these mandates, sorry, some of these mandates that you've mentioned, is there federal funding available also?
There isn't, but these are federal mandates.
You do get reimbursed at a higher rate if if I recall for those kids that are kind of like extraordinarily.
Extraordinary costs.
Extraordinary kids. The the reimbursement rate is higher than a more typical student.
That's correct, from the state funds.
Right.
Yeah. But then it's it's up to, you have to get to that threshold. And that now because of the changes in one seventy three, that threshold's higher. And we have all the percentage. It used to be that there was a percentage reimbursement in that initial sixty six thousand.
Meg, you have another question?
I think the last point I wanna make about one twenty seven is that if you stay between five and ten, the state will sort of buffer that, but the district will owe that money back. And I don't think a lot of people understand that. And I don't know if what's being worked on in Montpelier right now addresses that. But that could be a big um payday at the end of that that five-year block as this is transitioning, that districts are gonna owe the state if you go over the five percent but stay under ten. And I think that's something that they've been really cognizant of creating and drafting this budget moving forward.
So if if eight fifty passes, Meg, we're essentially throwing that entire five and ten percent mechanism out the window. It just, it's a broken mechanism that in this kind of environment just doesn't work. So um and I think the political reality is that I don't know that we would ever have gotten that money back from districts because of this exact problem. I don't know where it would have come from, um even though on paper it was designed to be a disincentive to just go after money. I think, you know, districts read the politics and decided to roll the dice um a few months ago when they were starting to put together their budgets. Um Maple Run was in the minority that, you know, sort of took the longer view and the more holistic view and did not do that. And so part of the way we're gonna solve this short-term problem and make it a little less bad is to get rid of that mechanism, re-warn a lot of those budgets, you know, get fifty or sixty million dollars back hopefully um out of this calculation, which in the end should actually help.
It'll help me more.
It should change the yield. So one of the things Bill said was like, all things being equal, this that this wouldn't really change it. Well, part of it is it's about getting all the whole system to go back and reset the whole base on which the original yield is calculated. And um I think Bill and I could sit here in front of you and argue about how many districts are actually gonna do this and to what degree they're gonna lower their budgets. Um but I'm thinking it actually will make a significant difference across the state, which means it'll impact that initial calculation that gets fed into the machine at the beginning and mean our tax rates go down too.
So what will that mean? So say this this passes, we benefit from it. What does that mean? Like so instead of a thousand dollar increase, it'll be like.
So every so every penny on the tax rate is is ten dollars per hundred thousand. And I know you, I know you, mostly all the council knows that. But that piece, um I mean, the yield just fluctuating, it's fluctuated everywhere from this year from ninety, from seventy one hundred when we, the initial collection of all the budgets were adopted and that's when started working on H eight fifty to now there's estimates up into almost ten thousand. A a a thirty dollar change in the yield can yield many cents in our tax, can be a cent or two, a penny or two on the tax rate. So it's really, that's the real number. When I showed you all those numbers up there on the spreadsheet, that number has the most influence on the tax rate for the payer in St. Albans. It's not what we do, it's that, because that's the divisor that goes into creating that tax rate. It's like, what does a dollar yield? And that really can make, when Martha Gagne, our business manager, does these calculations and we played with the Excel sheets to model these, a twenty-five, thirty-dollar difference in the yield can be a penny sometimes. It doesn't take much. And that's what's frustrating about it is it's hard to really model that for everyone because we don't know what the statewide system is. When I hear, you know, when I hear my colleagues talking about some of the things that went in, I heard ranges from three to five million. We're talking fifty million to get out of the ed fund. We're talking ten districts. I wouldn't be surprised that that could happen.
And if and if fifteen or twenty take three or five million out, it could be even better. What that fundamentally means to your question, Trudy, is that the warned modeled tax rates that Bill just showed you for Maple Run, we could do nothing. And if the legislature is successful with eight fifty and a few other things that we have on the drawing board that I don't think are ready for primetime, that rate is a worst-case scenario. It's just, it it becomes a worst-case scenario. And when in April and May, all the budgets are actually in and we actually pass the yield bill, I'll be able to sit here and hopefully say, instead of that being a dollar forty-three, maybe it's that goes into the calculator pre-CLA, maybe it's a dollar thirty or something like that. And that can have a really significant impacts in terms of lowering the um actual tax bill for rate payers in St. Albans.
So are we gonna have to vote on a school budget before we really know the impact?
We always do. We've been doing this for years. It's just so much less predictable. The model is broken.
Right, this is very much less predictable. At least we have like, in the old days, we had like, this is gonna be about what your increases.
Right.
Are you still planning to go to vote in March?
Yes, the board decided that the last meeting last week. Uh we we talked about it and they said we felt like we didn't put anything extra in. We're going for March and the voters will tell us.
And if, like, not to be like a Debbie Downer, but if it, what happens if it doesn't pass?
Then we go back and work on the budget and get them back to revote.
With the way things, the funding mechanism is working though, you could, what my superintendent said is I could cut this much money and it still isn't going to change.
You're right. So it, under the current law, and this is why I'm hopeful for H eight fifty, I actually think it's the way we should have gone because it's very similar to Act forty-six.
Okay.
We know that it's a linear relationship for a dollar. If you take a dollar out, it's gonna impact your tax rate. Currently, in Maple Run, we can't impact the tax rate until we take out three point two million dollars, which is equivalent of thirty-one teachers cut from a teaching staff of three ninety.
I got a question for you. When you said we have to take with Burlington building a school.
Yeah.
How come we have to finance that?
Because that's that's the statewide funding system, that all the money that's raised for all schools goes into the ed fund. And the ed fund is distributed, that dollar yield says what what will a dollar raise on the tax rate across the state's grant list for the spending that's happening? So when the spending goes up, it's gonna get distributed, not just to Burlington. This is what Act sixty changes to. We weren't in just a town system anymore. We're now in the state.
I come from the old school. It used to be years ago, everything was local.
Yep, it's not. That was changed in in ninety-eight.
I can remember when that happened. They complained about that.
Do you have a question as well? Okay, uh we're gonna take a couple more questions and we need to move on. But uh I thought there was a moratorium put on uh building construction.
There's not a moratorium. It's just a state aid.
Except for Burlington.
Well, so what what Bill and I have both said along the way, and I wanna make sure it doesn't get lost, is that if if a school goes out to bond, they're using their local bonding capacity, but the cost of financing that bond is borne by the entire ed fund. So when we went out and bonded for the.
You've heard of the NACTR, yeah.
That's borne by the state, right? And so every, everybody in the whole state pays for all of our kids. That's what the ed fund is. And in, my brother lives in New Hampshire, where they're more old school. When they have the kind of pressures that districts have had like this, they have a few more kids move into their community, a really, really small town that's part of a seven-town supervisor union, their taxes are going up twenty-eight percent this year. My brother's tax rate, which is already out of control. So this is not a Vermont-only problem. Other states have have solved it in different ways, but in states like that, what you get are rich towns that have good schools and poor towns that have schools that can't afford anything. And and in Vermont, we decided a generation ago that we weren't gonna do that anymore. And I think it's overall been really good for our state, but right now, in times like this, it's really, really challenging.
Uh, Mel, does you have your hand up?
No, that's BB is the one who had her hand up.
Oh, BB is.
That's the mouse.
Oh.
See, BB has her hand up.
Not really. I had kind of a thought comment, but it it it's kind of moved, but you know, nowhere in this conversation has the, I mean, I read by choice and um I absorbed last year's tax increase, which I expected. But I'm not thinking of me so much as we have a housing shortage and a few, you know, I'm just thinking about all these people who are just on the cusp and it's gonna be a cascading effect. And you know, you say, well, maybe we can cut school meals. Well, you know, if their rents go up extremely, those meals are gonna be needed. I'm just thinking of all the impacts this will have. Um, you know, there's already a housing shortage, so I just, you know, from a renter's and a low-income perspective, given my working-class health, this is, this would be just catastrophic for families that are right on the cusp right now.
Yeah, uh BB, just to clarify on the lunch thing, I think Trudy and I are on the same page with uh everyone. Everyone goes to school is calculated as a free lunch, but there's probably twenty percent, there's probably twenty percent that don't even take it, right? So there needs to be a better calculation. The one who's making out is a food service company who's putting down.
Oh, right.
Putting down for a thousand kids and only serving eight hundred meals. I mean, that's, that's the calculation that needs to be, that needs to change.
Right, but but when Marie mentioned, you know, fixed income retired, which I'm one.
I totally agree with everything else as I know.
Yeah, but I just, I just wanted to put the, you know, the place of the restaurant on the table.
You're right, exactly right. Is there one last question from the audience? Hearing none, I'm guessing you've all showed up to see Chad on, so we'll get, move on to that.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you, Mel.
I just wanna make sure he's legal.
I appreciate not fluffing it, especially when I read in big, you know, I read in Digger, other towns bragging about how they, eh, we're just gonna
Yeah, thank you for coming.
Spine million to it because we're not paying for it.
You fired that brought brought it to light though, right? I mean, that helped bring the whole conversation to life.
No, I'm glad about that.
Yeah, I think I I think that there was, there were a number of, there was a cascade of events that led to that. And you know, we're doing extraordinary things to solve an unusual problem, you know? It's a really complicated mechanism that we described in in order to fix it. It's gonna be a longer conversation, but there's a few things that we're gonna try this year to make the tax increases a lot less brutal.
Really like you for coming in. Thank you, Mike. Appreciate your time.
You know, when we, when we talked about the whether or not we're gonna go, you know, pad the budget, I'm gonna say, I said in the school board meeting, my mom, very wise woman, always said to us, just because Johnny Smith lies down in the middle of Main Street, doesn't mean it's okay for us to lie down in the middle of Main Street. It became, you know, forward, really responsible budget, looking at what our students need.
Do you know my nickname? Or my middle name is John?
I didn't know that. She wasn't talking about you.
That was a good call.
Thank you both. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Susan.
Thank you, Susan.
All right, now we're gonna move on to item number six, which is consider appointments for the police advisory board.
Move to approve Chris Lukens and Melinda White for three-year terms.
I'll second.
Any questions, comments? Chip, you got anything you wanna share?
Um, no, this one's not, I'm not giving this one.
Okay. I did see that, were we advertising for additional spots on police advisory? Maybe you don't know that yet.
I don't know.
That was on the frontboard.
I believe so.
So there could be more coming in. Okay. So we have a motion, a second, to approve Chris Lukens and Melinda White to the police advisory board. And and a second, a little in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hearing none, Chris and Melinda are appointed to police advisories. We're gonna move on to planning and development items with Chip Sawyer. We have four items on that uh to be discussed. Chip, thanks for joining us.
Thank you. First up is the second reading of zoning amendments that we went over last month. The amendments are summarized in the memo at the front of the of the packet, this piece of, this uh collection of papers. These amendments have a lot to do with clarifying some of the parking rules that we have, especially in being able to enforce them and also adding a lot of clarity and simplification to how performance bonds are dealt with in the zoning. The first amendment adds some definitions that help us navigate our various parking rules and make them clear to applicants, but also to staff and also help us to um enforce some of the aspects of them. So we've added definitions for actually, a definition for parking. We actually didn't have a definition for that. Public parking, storage, trailer and travel trailer. And over the course of administering the rules, we found that having these definitions, these definitions will help us in the future more effectively enforcing parking, enforcing parking rules.
This is the second reading. We had this last month.
Yeah.
Nathan, don't you wanna share in that?
Do you wanna go over the summary or? On the second reading. Yeah.
I I saw that the one change we asked for would be to.
Yeah.
Okay. Anyone have any questions on this?
Is there a duration on how long your lawn mower can be parked on your front yard?
Well, we had this conversation last month, like it's got, if it gets to the point where someone's complaining, then it's probably been there for a while.
If you're mowing around it.
That's right.
That's good. If there are weeds growing around your lawn.
It's fine, that's fine. No questions.
All right. Entertained a motion to approve second reading for the zoning amendments. Motion to approve Chad, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Marie. Any further comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Zoning amendments. Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
I'm sure if we're moving on to adoption of zoning amendments.
You just did that one. Um, oh, certification of highway mileage, this is something we do every year.
Can we back up? We had, we had two for zoning on the agenda.
Yeah, the um the uh, we did the second reading and then the considering the adoption was the motion that you suggested, yeah.
Just, thank you.
Every year, the state has us recertify all of the mileage of different types of highways in the state, mostly because we get block, block rent money from the state based on the mileage of class one roads or class two roads or class three roads. So there have been no changes this year.
And can you, as usual, give a summary of class one, two and three roads?
Yeah, class one roads are those numbered state and federal roads that the city's actually taken over. So Route seven, Route thirty-six, um Route thirty-eight are um examples in the city, like Lower Newton Street, for instance, or Main Street. Class two roads are any road that joins two numbered routes. So um Upper Weldon is one. It joins one oh four and Route seven, for instance. Congress Street joins Route seven and also one oh four. So that's a bad example, but you get the idea. High Street's one as well. Uh, and then class three are all the other city streets. We don't really have class four in the city of St. Albans.
They went up point oh two.
We got, yeah, I guess, I don't know what that is. Maybe we have to look into that.
Myland Drive, Myland Drive or something.
That's a private drive. It's new homework assignment. Find out where that class four goes.
And we have any other questions for Chip? If not, entertain a motion to approve the certification of highway mileage. A motion from Chad, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Marie. Any further questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, hearing none. Can I touch on two issues along the same lines and that is?
Yeah.
Will we be notifying probably more for you, Marty? Will we be getting a letter out to State Highway Garage to not strike the class twos?
Worked well last year. Yeah, we we were, we were pretty upfront with them last year and said, please don't strike. And then their contractor did it anyway.
So maybe just reinforce it with a letter or something. Now we can call back.
Yeah.
And the other one was, uh, can we put, Dom, more private much for you? Can we put a little pressure on the state for paving of um the state is here represented by Mr. McCarthy?
Congress and Upper Weldon.
Class two, we haven't received one since 2017.
So we, Mike, we're looking to pave Upper Weldon, that's.
In Congress.
In Congress, so we, we advocate every year with Lululela, as you, as you know, you know that.
I believe we give the class and pressure, correct?
Question for the.
We didn't work.
Recently applied some pressure, but we're told that they would look at it. Last year, we had applied for a class two on Congress Street, as did the town. And the town received theirs, the city didn't receive ours, so they allowed the town to use those funds on a different road. After telling us that the roads had to qualify under a certain classification.
The problem with those grants is that we, we get the block money based on mileage, every town does. We've been told the scoring for those grants is also based on mileage. It's like, well, now you're getting two, except that means the city doesn't, never gets a grant, because our mileage is so small. And when we argue about miles traveled, or traffic counts,
Traffic.
It falls on deaf ears, so.
Can we make that up?
Yeah, our regional, our streets serve more people in Franklin County than most other roads in Franklin County towns.
So Marty, you'll have that discussion with Dave, done the town, and see if we can,
Yeah.
work together on that.
We'll do that again.
Dual, another question?
Lower Newton, is that going to be paved sometime, you got a few holes there?
Around sticks and stuff, or where do you think?
Uh, just before the light, after you cross the four-way there.
So more on the, just down from Main Street?
Yes.
Marty, anything?
Hoping to do that as part of the road construction in the fountain Cathedral Square project.
Okay.
Which is gonna.
They're going to be digging up that road to make connections and stuff, so.
Because I dodge them as I go up.
That's our class four section.
It is, okay.
It became a class four over time.
Does Northland Regional Planning or the Transportation Advisory Committee, do they have any say in where any of this money goes, paving wise?
I don't believe they do, I believe they more advise the state's own road improvement program, and where the state's going to do its jobs throughout the county. But, yeah, yeah, I'll contact them, maybe we can work that angle too.
We, we did approve that, right?
Uh, yeah, so you could just sign.
Voted on that.
So you were catching up, so I had that.
I know my questions.
The last thing's real quick, we're supposed to present to you the annual report that we send into the state on our TIP district. A lot of numbers, but what the report is saying is that our TIP district has been very active, very successful. I mean, is always raising the increment necessary to maintain our financial plan of eventually paying off the debt. So in fact, no council action is required for this, we're just supposed to say that we presented it to you.
So we have 10 more years to pay off our debt, right?
Um, yeah, yes.
So even the new debt we, we incur.
Well, no, we have, we have 10 more years to gather increments, we'll be paying debt off based on the bonds.
Okay.
Yeah, 10 more years to save up the increment.
Okay.
Okay. Chip, do you have anything else for us?
Nope, thank you very much.
Sarah, would you like to join us?
I'd be happy to, thank you. See how long we can keep this going.
All right, we're moving on to item number eight, which is finance items with Sarah Mason.
Thank you. Items 8A, 8B, and 8C are all of the same nature. This is a standard declaration of intent that proceeds an issuance of tax exempt bonding that allows us, under the IRS rules, to reimburse ourselves for certain costs incurred in advance of the debt issuance. There are three separate declarations, each of which relate to one of the three projects included in the $11.4 million TIP bond on the March ballot. None of these tie our hands in any way, they don't say that we're going to bond, just says that in case we do, we're able to reimburse ourselves certain expenditures incurred in advance. And so I am looking for the council to approve each of these individual declarations, if that is your pleasure. And I'll have Nicole certify them, we'll include them through the file. Are there any questions?
This is just getting ready for a yay.
Correct.
So you want one at a time?
Yes, please.
I'll make a motion to adopt the declaration of intent for the, intent for the view redevelopment project.
A motion.
Second.
And a second from Chad, any questions on that from anyone? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none, motion passes.
I will make a motion to adopt the declaration of intent for the Federal Street Connector project.
Second.
A motion from Trudy, seconded by Chad for the declaration of intent for Federal Street Connector. All those, anyone have any comments, questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hearing none, the intent passes.
I'll make a motion to adopt the declaration of intent for the Courthouse Brownsville project.
A motion from Trudy, seconded by Chad. Any questions for Sarah?
Where is that courthouse?
The one you used to.
Oh, the one I worked at, okay.
The one where you, you slept down in the basement in the far corner, that one?
You notice, no, I might say it worked out.
The one that was a Titanic was the new courthouse.
That's right.
It flooded, yeah.
All right, we have a motion and a second for the declaration of intent for the courthouse. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. And then we have approved, approval of the state revolving loan.
Yes, so the last thing on the finance list this evening is now that the new water tank is complete, we're looking to apply for a feasibility and planning loan to evaluate the old tank, to see what needs to happen to it, to get it back online. Marty, anything to add?
Well, it's online now, but in order to, the reason we had to build our new tank was to have enough redundancy. We've never been able to empty the old tank to have a full evaluation of it done. Now that the new tank is online, this spring, we're going to empty the old tank. They'll have guys come in, in the past, they would have divers come in and just kind of take a look at it. Now they'll be able to empty it, go in and do a evaluation of the thickness of the steel and integrity of the tank.
So the new one's up and running?
Yes.
How long's that tank been up there, the old one?
Uh, I wanna say it was in the 50s it was built originally.
So at this point, we, we're not 100% that it's salvageable?
No, they're confident that it can be refurbished, but it's just seeing what needs to be done to get it refurbished.
And those tanks are much cheaper to run, because it's gravity fed from Fairfax, as opposed to pumping them up from the lake on Quong Shore. So that's why they're important to have.
That's why they had to put the other one right, at the same level two for the gravity of it.
Yeah.
The pressure.
Okay. Your motion?
I'll make that motion to approve that state revolving loan for assessment.
We have a motion and a second, motion from Trudy, seconded by Chad. Any other questions for Marty or Sarah? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you. I'll pass it in this direction, the sign, please, and Dom, there's a line for you as well.
Move to approve warrants for 131.
I have a motion to approve the warrants as presented, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Trudy. Any questions or comments?
I have a quick question.
Quick question for Trudy.
It looks like there's a few properties on Cayman that we're going to want to, I was just curious about.
CJC.
What that is.
CJC, we just sent it.
Okay, so 13, 34, 336, okay.
We get the money for.
Probably I've been looking at that since I got on the board a year ago, I just don't understand this time. Okay.
We get the, we get the money for.
Good job though.
Some of our grant funds cover that though.
Yep. Any other questions? Nope, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Uh, warrants for 131 passes is approved, we'll move on to approve of minutes.
For 1824.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second on the minutes for 1824. Any questions, comments, amendments to the minutes? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Move to approve minutes for a special meeting on 12924.
I have a motion to approve minutes from 129, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Marie. Any questions or comments regarding the minutes from 129? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Minutes are approved for 12924.
Move Trudy.
Thanks, now we'll second that.
Mr. Mayor, I require a second under parliamentary procedure.
So, um, so it's a sad, sad day in the council chambers. Mr. Spooner will not be running again, although there may be a caveat to that, just so people know. But Chad has, Chad has been here on the council for 15 years. And that, I think we can all pass that significant commitment to the city of St. Albans. As mayor for the last six years, I can't thank Chad enough for his assistance. I don't know if it gets caught on TV, but he.
Don't forget public comment.
I said, oh yeah, thanks Chad, I forgot about that.
Don't forget Zoom, that Zoom.
So Chad, is it historic perspective, his advocacy for Ward 6 has, is unmatched, I think, for any Alderperson that's come out of Ward 6. He's been a great, he's been a great addition, well, for, for the council, and he has proven to be just a great asset to the city of St. Albans. And as part of that, we did, we'd like to present a plaque to Chad, and I'll read it to folks. "The Honorable Chad Spooner, Ward 6 Alderperson, St. Albans City Council. In sincere gratitude for the dedicated service, assistance, guidance, and outstanding leadership you've provided to the citizens of St. Albans for 15 years. Your efforts on the city council have had a significant impact on our community and will be felt for years to come. You have shown what it means to be involved in your community and set an example to be followed in the future and cherished by those of us that were fortunate enough to experience it ourselves. From your friends and colleagues on the St. Albans City Council and in City Hall, we recognize Chad Spooner, February 12th, 2024." You know, I would also like to add that Chad works for the Health Department and was very, very active during the COVID years, the last, three of the last four years for short. And the, his duties on the city council never waver. He was here every meeting, he was engaged, he brought, he brought a lot to the table. Not just for his ward, but for the whole, for the whole city as well. And in addition to that, for those who don't know, Chad is the president of the St. Albans Football Association. So during those months from August, at least till November, highly engaged, continues to coach the young kids, grades one to four. So it's not, his commitment is not singled out just for the city council, but for everything else he does in his life. He has an active family, he, as I said, he's very active in, with that Vermont Health Department and with the St. Albans Football. And I'm sure there's more that I don't know about, but Chad, I would thank you for your service. And it's kind of a pleasure working with you and, and continue to work with you, so. And we'll see if the council has anything you want to add.
It's, it's been a great experience working, sitting next to you, except for tonight. And, you know, thank you so much, Chad, for everything you've done. You've always been there to answer questions of, you know, we had them, and, you know, you're very informed, very enthused what's going on, and that's, that's great. So wishing you the best and, and going to miss you.
Thank you.
I'd like to chime in on that, and say, I've only been on the council for three years and have enjoyed your input. I know often, almost every week, that you've done additional outside research, other than what is in our packet. Looking up a statue, or checking something from past meetings, so. I appreciate being on board with you, and I think you've done a wonderful job.
Thank you, sir.
And as a new council person, you were a great support for me, and I appreciate all the texts and phone calls to like, help me get up to speed in my role here. And you have the utmost respect from your constituents, and I know that, I'm sure that they tell you that too, but I hear that in the community. Your, your, the people in your ward really appreciate all that you've done, so.
A lot of people may not recognize Chad as he sits here today, he had, when I started, he had a ponytail down. The lower back. He's changed his appearance many times, so it's tough to keep up with him, but his efforts have not changed at all, and it's been great to be with Chad, so thank you.
Yeah, I've been, I just want to say, I've been very fortunate, Ward 6 citizens have elected me every year. One of those contested, highly contested, so I appreciate the faith they have in what I do. I've worked with great people on this council, three mayors, Tim's the third mayor, Mayor Marty Manningham, and of course, Mayor Liz Gamache. Been lots of council folks. You know, I can stay, stay, stand up here and say, we did this and we did that, honestly, a lot of that would have been done with or without me. We have a, we have a great administration here, Dominic Gleeds, a great group of people. I think my most proudest thing is the decorum we hold here. We agree to disagree sometimes, and we just move on, that's not the case everywhere, so I, I really appreciate that. And I know, Tim, you asked me what was the toughest part of being on the council. After 15 years, I, you know, I was thinking about it. I've had a few people in my ward that passed away that were really instrumental in the first few years, so that's probably the hardest part, being on the council for so long, is the neighbors I've lost, so.
I'd like to offer the floor to Dom, Dom has been here probably just,
16?
Same length of time as Chad, or just a little more?
Yeah. Well, I would echo many of the sentiments, Chad, you know, you've, you've been in many ways the model, model city councillor. I appreciate all the many follow-up calls. Chad has an uncanny ability to get the big picture and be really effective on big picture leadership, but also really drill down to nuts and bolts, you know, operational stuff that, that matters and, and, you know, did an incredible job representing this ward, so. I'm a little worried about what's going to happen to that building across the street from you.
Don't worry, I'll sit out there and tell you all about it.
They'll go, Jensen, Chad, they'll still keep coming in.
Maybe.
I thought this gave us an opportunity to redirect that whole park funding somewhere else.
I, I will say, I gave Marty a run those first six or so months.
Did you, I was, you took over for.
Pete Schley.
Oh, you did?
Yeah.
Well, thank you, Chad, from all of us, we greatly appreciate your time and effort.
Thank you to your family too.
Yeah, my, my youngest son doesn't remember a time when I wasn't on the council, so.
Right.
He was about two and a half when I got on, so.
Yeah.
Let's do mayor check-in, Trudy, we'll start with you.
Um, just some chatter from some residents on Bishop Street concerned about some activity in one of the apartments there that we're working on.
It's the one that's on our list, you're writing on, no?
It's on the list. Um, I did, yeah, and I, I was wondering, I saw in the notes that there was, you know how we get the list of the places that have violations? One of those places wants to add some units to one of those places that have violations, so I would like, I would be concerned about that. Do you look at that when you're saying if, if someone can, with the Developmental Review Board, add like, a necessary. with the Developmental Review Board, add like a necessary dwelling, yet they are always on the list?
If they have any zoning violations, it's gonna be dealt with for sure.
It's the, it's the PH.
PHS.
Yeah.
That would cross over into the DRV's analysis, but it certainly affects their relationship with the city.
I look at it. But that's all, that's all for my one. It's the Bishop Street stuff.
Marie, what goes to your side?
Um, for the most part, quiet. Had a little, uh, probably some domestic issues right in my area. Um, but the police have been there and handled it. Two nights in a row that they, they made a presence there, so not sure what's going on. But, um, other than that, it seems fairly quiet. Awful lot of loud vehicles that seem to come up with Cell Street and over Elm Street. A fair amount of speeding that I've noticed, but other than that.
Do you want some quieter ride sites, Mary there?
No. Not necessarily.
I thought that's why Michael's here.
Grab a couple.
Well, blood.
Can't you glad you came?
So glad to be back in these olive oil.
You're gonna watch it while you left. Anything else, Marie?
No, that's it.
Nope.
Uh, gotta have it quiet down where the south wind blows, cause I can hear it. I wanted to see, nice to work with you. Really enjoy chat, would you?
Thank you.
You good?
I'm good.
Bob?
I do have one thing, and that's sort of a general city thing. And it took Roland Webb, who was a outstanding member of the community and a police officer in this city for twenty-eight years, passed away recently. And I'd like to ask the mayor if he would like to call for a brief moment of silence and respect for Roland Webb.
Thanks for the reminder on that. Bob and I talked about it and I, I, my, my bad, I forgot, I forgot about it. But, uh, I, when I was with the rec, in the rec department, I, I worked with Roland, uh, Rowley. We joined him, uh, for twenty-eight years, and he passed away, um, last week. And so, yes, I would like to, uh, take a moment of silence for, for Rowley, who served the city in, uh, in a time when policing was a little bit, uh, different. And he, he was, uh, he was an individual who focused on the community and community members and, um, was well, well-liked throughout the community. So we could take a moment, um, of silence for Rowley. I'd appreciate that. Thank you. And thanks again, Bob, for bringing that up. I think that's it. All you have got, Chad?
I just have one thing. I chatted with you, Dom, about it. I know last month, this Bronson City Council meeting got Zoom bombed. And I'd like that not to happen here. So, uh, basically, they struggled between, uh, freedom of speech and the hate that was being spewed. So I would like for us to, uh, put on the agenda where it says, uh, within council review, also put to be respectful, um, to all that we welcome here, so, or something to that matter. Just to know if you are feeling hate, we're gonna cut you off, that's it. We're not gonna let it go. We're not gonna have that battle over. For people's right to feel safe here and their right to spew hate, so. That was my only thing. I'd like to consider that.
Thanks, sir. Dom, can you give us, for me, can you give us an update on winter carnival? Where do we think we're gonna go with that?
Snow's snow.
Yeah. They are making snow, right, Marty? So they have some snow for some activities?
Looks like it's gonna be cold enough where they'll be able to make snow. We have run another dedicated line for the second snowgun, so they'll be able to run both those guns at the same time. At least get the duct tape derby in.
Yeah, I mean, the, our department headings got pushed back to tomorrow, so we're out different guy then. Everything I've seen on Facebook has been still encouraging people to show up for it. Also, they're not firm on the town yet.
Okay. Great. Thank you all for coming. Appreciate it. Entertaining a motion to adjourn.
So.
What time is it, Chad?
Right on time, my man.
I'll second that motion.
It wasn't looking good.
It wasn't looking good for a while.
Thank you all for coming.
Thank you.